Good evening and welcome. Welcome to the regular meeting of the APISD Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, February 10th, 2025. The time now is 7:00 PM. And with a quorum of five of seven trustees, I now call this meeting to order. We will begin with our pledges of allegiance and invocation. If you'd like to join us, please, Mr. Rector will lead us in the invocation. And for the pledges of allegiance, Mr. Mullenax.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let us pray. My heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. We thank you for all of your divine blessings on our staff and our students of APISD. Lord, you are the center of our lives. We will continue to trust in you. As we go through life, help us to be better servants for you. We pray for our superintendent and this board as we come together this evening. We ask all these blessings in the perfect name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mullenax. Thank you, Mr. Rector. Next on the agenda is public testimony. This is the time for public comments. Do we have any, anyone wishing to make comments tonight? As there's none, then we will continue on. Our next item is district recognition presentations. And so for this portion, we are going to have the presentation of Panthers and Employees of the Month, read by Ms. Hill and certificates presented by Mr. Mullenax and Ms. Chapa.
Good evening. We will get started with our Panthers of the Month. First, we have Kylie Rojas. Kylie is an incredibly helpful and compassionate student who consistently goes out of her way to support her peers and teachers in class. As an emergent bilingual student, she often assists others in their native language, creating a more inclusive and collaborative environment and adds to our classroom culture of respect. Despite being new to the school district, Kylie quickly adapted and has shown a strong willingness to engage with the material and with her classmates. Her positive attitude and work ethic make her a valuable asset to our class. Congratulations, Kylie. Next, we have Evelyn Ogan. Evelyn is a third grader at Charlie Marshall Elementary. Congratulations to Evelyn Ogan, our Student of the Month. Your hard work, kindness, and wonderful manners make you an absolute pleasure to be around. You always give your best, and it truly shows. We're so proud of you and are excited to celebrate your well-deserved recognition. Congratulations, Evelyn. Next, we have Cambrun Sigmund. Cambrun is an eighth grader at AC Blunt Middle School. She consistently demonstrates a strong sense of integrity and selflessness. She is attentive to the needs of our campus, always stepping up to offer support and lend a helping hand wherever it's needed. As a member of the National Junior Honor Society, she embodies the values of scholarship, service, and leadership and character. Focused on delivering a job well done, Cambrun sets an example for her peers with her dedication and attention to detail. We are incredibly proud of Cambrun and grateful for the hard work and kindness she brings to our community. Her contributions do not go unnoticed, and she is an inspiration to all. Keep shining, Cambrun. Next, we have Randy Rangel. Randy is a sophomore at Aransas Pass High School and continues to show his leadership and spirit in everything he does. As part of the Panther Prowl, he has shown leadership by stepping in and designing quality work for the yearbook as well as one of the art students who was chosen to be published in Celebrating Art Book Fall 2024 Edition. He has shown pride and school spirit, being one of the boys' basketball managers and is our emcee for all of our pep rallies. Randy takes his pride in his school and schoolwork, and this is why he is Aransas Pass High School's February Panther of the Month. Now, we will move on to our Employees of the Month. First up, we have Crystal Tapia. Ms. Tapia has been an exceptional member of our Falk family, making a profound impact on our campus community. Her unwavering dedication, passion, and leadership have not only shaped the success of her students, but have also inspired her colleagues to strive for excellence every day. Through her exceptional leadership skills, Ms. Tapia fosters a culture of motivation, encouragement, and collaboration, always prioritizing what is best for both her team and her students. She deeply understands the purpose and significance behind every action taken as an educator, ensuring that her work is always rooted in meaningful, student-centered outcomes. Her commitment to excellence, coupled with her ability to uplift those around her, makes her an invaluable asset to our campus and a true role model for all. Congratulations, Ms. Tapia. Next, we have Betty Stark. Ms. Stark is the ISS para at Charlie Marshall Elementary School. Ms. Betty has been at Charlie Marshall for five years. She is incredibly appreciated at Charlie Marshall Elementary School. She goes above and beyond with planning each month for our staff luncheons and monthly staff dinners. She keeps, she keeps our marquee up to date, is always willing to make the best posters, supports classroom teachers with behavior as well as supplemental instruction. She is always good for a laugh, and Charlie Marshall Elementary School would not be the same without her. We love you, Ms. Betty. Congratulations. We are thrilled to recognize Coach Trey Sauceda as our February Employee of the Month for, for AC Blunt Middle School. Their outstanding commitment to the success and achievement of our students does not go unnoticed. Coach Sauceda consistently goes above and beyond by giving of himself to create an environment that truly centers on the needs of our students. Whether through volunteering for student engagement opportunities or taking extra steps to ensure each student's success, he is a true example of dedication and selflessness. Through his continuous efforts to engage, inspire, and lead, he is making a lasting impact on the lives of many. Thank you, Coach Sauceda, for your unwavering dedication. Your hard work and commitment are deeply appreciated and serve as an inspiration. Congratulations. Next, we have Ms. Ashley Sasson. Ms. Sasson is an amazing teacher who works with our Life Skill students at Aransas Pass High School. Ms. Sasson goes above and beyond for her students every single day. She takes them on trips into the community to help students learn their place in our world and makes connections with city and business leaders so that her students can transition more easily into the local workforce. Ms. Sasson, Ms. Sasson's love for her students and the community of Aransas Pass is evident by the way she works with parents and other school staff to provide the best possible learning environment for her students. She is often overheard quoting her favorite band director and teacher from her days in high school when giving students advice. Her passion for teaching and love for her students is why Ashley Sasson is Aransas Pass High School's February Employee of the Month. Next, we have Ms. Heather Wahorta. Ms. Wahorta is our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. She has hit the ground running for the students and staff of APISD. Her work ethic and attention to detail have helped shape our systems and processes to create successful outcomes for our students. She takes on many challenges and tasks to ensure we support the right environment for our students to achieve academic excellence. Thanks, Ms. Wahorta, for your support and commitment to APISD. Last, but certainly not least, we proudly recognize Ms. Ashley Sasson as Aransas Pass ISD's Transportation Employee of the Month. Her consistent dedication, exceptional work ethic, and positive attitude has not gone unnoticed. Ashley is always there when needed, when her name is called. Her, Ashley, your contributions don't go unnoticed, and we are incredibly grateful to have you as part of our team. Congratulations. That concludes our Panthers and Employees of the Month.
Now, tonight is special. We have some additional district recognitions. At this time, we'll have the presentation of the AC Blunt Middle School UIL winners.
If we could have our coaches come forth, please. Ms. Crib, Ms. Esquivel, Ms. Neal, and Ms. Hackman, Ms. Hackfield, I apologize. Perfect. First, we have the Black and White Art for Seventh Grade, fourth place, Kaylee Jimenez.
Oh, did you, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mullenax.
Congratulations, Kaylee. Next, we have Bella Rife. Bella placed third for the Black and White Art for Eighth Grade. Next, we have Zamora Clark. Zamora placed for Seventh, for Science for Seventh Grade. Next, we have Frankie Barreta, Barueta, sorry. Frankie is receiving the honor for placing in sixth place, sixth place for Seventh Grade Science. Congratulations, Frankie. Next, we have Sydney Brewster. Sydney placed second for Science for Eighth Grade. Congratulations, Sydney. Next, we have April Morgan. April was the fourth place winner for Music Memory for Seventh Grade. Next, we have Addison Cooper. Addison was the fourth place winner for Music Memory for the Eighth Grade. Congratulations, Addison. Next, we have Elijah Nalls. Elijah was our fifth place winner for Matches, Charts, and Graphs for the Sixth Grade. Congratulations, Elijah. Next up, we have Baylin Dulaney. Bay, Baylin was our fourth place winner for Spelling for the Seventh Grade. Next, we have Molly Castano. Molly was our first place winner for Eighth Grade Spelling. Congratulations, Molly. Next, we have Cambrun Sigmund. Cambrun was our second place winner for Eighth Grade Spelling. Congratulations, Cambrun. Next up, we have Baylin Dulaney. Baylin was also sixth place for Impromptu Speaking for the Seventh Grade. Thank you to our coaches, Ms. Crib, Ms. Esquivel, Ms. Neal, and Ms. Hackfield. Can we get all of our winners to please come up for a group photo, please? Don't be shy.
Family members, you're more than welcome to take a photo of this as well. Duck or stand?
Ladies, are we ducking?
Mr. Mullenax, will you join us, Dr. Barnes?
Congratulations again to all of our UIL academic winners. Next up, we will be recognizing the AC Blunt Spanish Spelling Bee winners. First up, we have Brittany Garcia, who placed third. Congratulations, Brittany. In second place, Natasha Gonzalez. Congratulations, Natasha. And our first place winner for our inaugural AC Blunt Spanish Spelling Bee was Sofia Morales. And that concludes our Spanish Spelling Bee winners.
And thank you to Mrs. Neal for putting that together for us.
Yes, thank you so much. Can we get all of the spelling bee winners to please come up to do a photo with Ms. Neal, please? Yes, in front of the backdrop. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations again. Okay, we are still celebrating. We now will be moving on to our Aransas Pass High School art students. These Aransas Pass High School art students are being recognized, recognized for participating in a national-wide contest for Celebrate Art. These students will have their art published in this year's edition of Celebrating Art. This is a huge accomplishment, so we're very excited to get to celebrate with all of, all of these amazing students tonight. First up, we have Emily Carlos. Next, we have Faith Corona. Yes, feel free to come up. We're going to take your picture, and then if you would like to stand in front of your art.
And if you will, please come stand by your tremendous work.
Thank you. Next up, we have Olivia Durham. Next, we have Xavier Johnston. Next, we have Brooklyn Lockhart. I apologize to the winners. We're going to do a group photo at the end. You do not have to stand by your art. Next, we have Shelby Morgan. Next, we have Denise Horn. Next, we have Trinity Mutan. Next, we have Taylor Munger. Next, we have Cadence Pippen. Next, we have Randy Rangel. And last but certainly not least, we have Frankie Zermino. Now, if we could have all of the art students to please come to the front to do a group photo.
Ms. Neal, we also have Mrs. Reminds, the art teacher here.
Let us all please recognize and give a hand for Ms. Reminds, the art teacher. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to all of our students. Thank you to our coaches, our UIL coaches. And this is just a great opportunity to stop and recognize the wonderful achievements of our students. And we want to wish you continued success creatively, academically, and just want you to continue to thrive. And we are so proud of you in representing Panther Nation at the same time that you are spreading your wings and reaching your potential in these other areas. So, thank you, parents and guardians of family, family members. Thank you for coming and being a part of this district recognition and celebration here tonight. We really appreciate your time and you coming. If you would like to take additional photos, we'll take a pause before we go into our next presentation. And you are certainly welcome to stay with us during our board meeting. But we recognize it's a school night, so if you need to step out, that's okay too. I'll come around this way. Yes, you don't have to reach over the table.
Oh, just us three first? Okay, us three and then all of us. Hey, what's the take one? Well, I don't know.
All right, ready? There you go. I got a few good ones.
Okay, thank you. Got up here with you. Come on. Mom, I'm sure she has places to go.
Oh, gosh.
I got your best side.
Yeah, right. You want me to autograph?
That's right.
Here, hang on. Don't look tough as hell.
All right. There you go. Smile, Cindy. Amelia.
Mom, look over there. Smile. Smile over there. Thank you, thank you.
Oh, goodness. It's okay.
We got a picture.
That's interesting.
I kind of noticed that when I was giving them out. There was two names when I said it. I hadn't seen that name before. Before I could done, I get one. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Congratulations.
You shorten it up when I get off.
It's just practice for your Employee of the Month in the future.
Good job. You just keep working it. Do it all.
Ready? The tais cooking. There we go.
Thank you. That's great.
That is, you keep working hard.
I saw that.
Cindy look like you know what you're doing.
He does.
Good job, Cindy.
Bye. Have a good night.
Our next presentation is the presentation of the 2025-26 Property and Casualty Insurance Renewals. Tonight, we have Chase Carlisle with Carlisle Insurance. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody this evening?
Good.
Excited to be here this evening for the first time in a number of years. We have some excellent news to share and some favorable results. So, back about November, we did come out. We met with Dr. Barnes and Ms. Chapa to discuss what we anticipated seeing on the March 1st renewal. And at that time, we were estimating between a 10% to 15% reduction, just based on the market conditions we saw in the third and fourth quarter of 2024. So, that did come around, and we did see some favorable results even better than we anticipated. So, without further ado, I would like to jump into some of the details, and then we'll jump over to the pricing. I assume everybody has a comparison sheet. Here in the middle, like we do in the past, we show you an expiring column and the renewal column. Anything highlighted in yellow represents differences in the program from last year to this year. At the top, you'll notice last year, when we began the coverage period, we had approximately $112 million worth of building and contents insured. This year, we're looking at almost $118 million. Represents about a $5.3 million increase in valuations. Again, we tried to maintain replacement cost values, so those values did go up about 5% overall for the district to maintain those coverage valuations. Jumping down to the next yellow section in the deductible for the wind and hail and the named storm coverages, there is a difference there. Last year, we had a per occurrence, per location deductible. This year, we were able to achieve a per occurrence, per building deductible. So, why is that important? That's important because the previous year at the per location, if we take a high school campus and we were sustained damage at one of the buildings, they would calculate the deductible based on every building evaluation that was at that campus or that location. This year, we've gone back to kind of the good old days where they gave us the per building deductible, so it's only based off a percentage of that building that was affected at the time of loss, not the entire location or the entire campus. So, much lower deductible structure than we had last year. And more importantly, on the named storm, wind and hail deductible, last year our minimum was $1.3 million. That has been cut in half to $650,000. So, strong improvement in the deductible structure that we were able to achieve this year. Going down, number of vehicles there. Last year, we started with 25. This year, we have 29. Not real important. Little bit lower, you'll see a coverage item catastrophic comprehensive coverage. So, that was a separate coverage that the PCAT program added in last year, where they applied a separate deductible and a separate coverage limit to any vehicles that may have damage due to a cat event, so tornado, hailstorm, hurricane-type issues. This year, they've gotten rid of that. The coverage is built into the actual physical damage portion, so we don't have a separate sublimit for vehicle damage or a separate deductible. Would just be applicable to the $1,000 auto physical damage deductible that you'll see a little bit lower. That's why we're showing an NA there, because it's not applicable this year. Same thing when you look at the comprehensive coverage, catastrophic comprehensive deductible, NA. Again, it would just be applicable to the $1,000 auto physical damage deductible that we have for other items. Jumping over to the next page, there's really no other changes in the employee benefits liability, educator legal liability. Everything remained the same. Cyber liability is the same as we had last year, which brings us to the final tally for what we're looking at this year. Overall, you're looking at approximately a $216,000 reduction in the insurance, which represented about 16%. Majority of that is coming out of the property insurance, was where we have seen the market soften over the last 12 months. Y'all's property rate was reduced 22% from what we paid last year. So, the difference between the 22% and the 16% total cost reduction is the increased valuation of the $5.3 million that we referenced at the beginning. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Trustees, any questions, comments? I just have one on the same item I scheduled that you just took us through. Thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am.
On that line item that says flood. So, we have, for comparison, we have the current cost, but on that last column, and it's right before the annual premium total. It has a "to be determined."
Yeah, so when we met last week, we hadn't had gotten your flood renewals yet. We do have that number now. It's 49, 310.
So, that was the additional schedule that you provided us?
Yes, ma'am.
AP flood. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and the reason we didn't have those is, I guess, two years ago, when the board elected to purchase those policies on the National Flood Insurance Program, there's a 30-day waiting period when you buy a new one. And so, those actually renew the first part of April instead of 31. But yes, we do have that number to plug in tonight. So, the total that you would be approving tonight is $1,126,100.
Thank you. Anything else, trustees? Dr. Barnes, Ms. Chapa? Okay.
Little bit easier discussions when it's going down, right? My life's at least a little bit easier.
But are we considered still in the hard market?
No.
No? Okay.
You know, the question everybody keeps asking is, what are the California fires going to do to the market, right? It's still too early to determine that. You know, the numbers being thrown out are about a $50 billion total loss to the insured market, which would probably not be enough to move the needle, but we still have wind season to go through. So, barring any hurricane activity in the United States, I think we will remain in the soft market through 2026. It just is kind of depending on what the hurricane season has in store for us, so kind of out of our hands at this point.
Thank you. Here we go. Apologize, my... Okay, so our next item is the public hearing of the Texas Academic Performance Reports. This evening, we will, let me just go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll begin with an overview of the Texas Academic Performance Reports. And then, if there's any public that wishes to make comment, we'll hear that specifically on the public hearing item of the Texas Academic Performance Reports. Good evening.
Hello. All right, you can go to the next slide. That's just telling you what's on the report there. Okay, thank you. Currently, there are no A through F ratings, designation distinctions, or special education determination statuses this year. The data for the district accreditation status has not been set by TEA for the 23-24 school year because of the lack of ratings. And so, that's due to things that are in litigation right now. So, on the previous one, you do have the full link, and then we have our hard copy that we're required to have at central office. And then, each campus will also have one if someone were to ask for that. And then, you have, well, we will have it posted. I will get with Ms. Miller to have it posted for us, and then the paper copy that we are talking about. And so, it's not any new information that we've already looked at as far as where we stand versus the state and the region and things like that, and with our special pops. Are there any public hearing questions?
So, thank you for the overview. Trustees, you actually have the report, but before we get to trustee comments or questions, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make comments, public comments on this item? Seeing none? Trustees, questions or comments? Okay, so we will close the public hearing on this year's Texas Academic Performance Report.
All right.
Thank you. Next item is our superintendent's report. Dr. Barnes.
Thank you. We have two reports listed. The first report is our enrollment and attendance report for the month, January to early February. Well, we'd like to point out, as we've talked about each and every month, want to keep it in everybody's, at the front of everybody, is that our enrollment is still dropping. We're actively working on it. Right now, a big push is the students going to homeschool, and it has a correlation with our attendance push. So, the more we try to make sure kids are in school, some of those parents are pulling their kids for homeschool. So, it is impacting our enrollment. We're trying to identify other ways to bring those kids back in, whether it's through alternative programs or just, we even have a principal talk about making home visits. And he made some home visits, trying to get some kids back. But that's for our monthly report. The second report is our year-to-date. That's snapshot numbers from October 31st. That we report to TEA for our yearly number, and then, of course, our average attendance is 92.56. We're running about 93% the last few weeks. The flu has been very virulent in our community, and so that's impacting our attendance right now. But hopefully, that will subside, and we'll see our attendance numbers go back up as well.
Trustees, any comments or questions regarding enrollment or attendance? Thank you, Dr. Barnes. So, now we have our next item, which is the first reading of the TASB Initiated Policy Update, 124 Legal Policies and Local Policies. Trustees, you have in your board book explanatory notes and also comparison packet. Just really quickly, these are CAA Local Fiscal Management Goals and Objectives, Financial Ethics, CDA Local Other Revenues Investments, CY Local Intellectual Property, DH Local Employee Standards of Conduct, EHB Local Curriculum Design Special Programs, EHBB Local Special Programs Gifted and Talented Students, FFG Local Student Welfare, Child Abuse and Neglect, and GKA Local Community Relations Conduct on School Premises. Dr. Barnes, is there...
Any additions?
No, ma'am. Okay.
We'll bring this back for the March 25th board meeting for approval.
Trustees, upon your review, are there any questions or comments at this time regarding any of the listed legal policies and/or local policies? With none at this time, then we will move on to next item of business, Renewal of Local Innovation Plan as a District of Innovation. Dr. Barnes.
Yes, ma'am. TEA has a policy in place that allows districts to, it's called the District of Innovation Plan, which allows us to do some specialized things within our district that are unique to us. We mostly use it for our calendar, when we're going to start our school year and when we're going to end our school year. It also impacts our hiring policies, and so that is up for renewal. And so, it goes out to a committee. The committee will work through the, any additions or improvements to the plan, and then we'll bring that to the board in March for approval.
Again, trustees, you have the amendment and renewal. Upon your review, are there any questions at this time or concerns or comments? So, we will see this again. If there are no comments or questions at this time, we'll move on to our next item, which is our calendar of upcoming events. Any additions from the staff?
No, ma'am. Just remember, we're in the spring, so there's a lot of softball, baseball, track's going to be going on. We'll have some spring concerts coming up in band as well, and so I'll keep you guys posted with that list of upcoming events.
Thank you. Next item, financial reports. Ms. Chapa.
The Accounts Payable Report for January 31st, we have $7,459,000 on hand. It's a little bit higher since we received about $3 million in tax collections this month. We spend in bills $537,000. Next report, the Budget Report. We've received $11,7839 in revenue, and we've expended $7,624,000 in expenses. Last report, the Tax Collection Report. We received $3,243,546 of current tax collections. That's 73.94% of our collections. We're about 1% higher as we compare ourselves to last year, which is, which is good. Tax collections are higher. Total outstanding tax collections, including delinquent, is $4,628,000. If there's any questions?
Trustees, any questions on Accounts Payable? Or the Budget Status Report? Or the Tax Collection Summary? Ms. Chapa, I have one on the, regarding the tax collections. I know we had, like other jurisdictions, dealing with the appeals. Has that tapered off? The impact or the adjustment? The impact or the adjustments that we needed to make?
This year was different from last year. On January 31st, the State Controller issued the state property values, and they came out lower than our appraisal values. So that's a good thing. So whatever we're collecting at, it's going to show. That's how we're going to get funded. Like right now, that we've collected 73%, that's how we're going to get funded. Now we're on track. Now the state values and the appraisal values are matching up, not compared to last year. Last year, there was a big discrepancy.
Yes. Thank you. Once again, trustees, anything on financial reports? If not, we will move on to our next item, which is our Consent Agenda. We have three items, excuse me, two items. And which are consideration and approval of the updated NJROTC contract between the US Navy and APIsD. And then we also have the minutes for our regular meeting from the January 13th, 2025, 2025 meeting. Trustees, does anyone want to pull any consent agenda items for further discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mullenax, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Rector, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. We're now at the portion of our agenda for but, but, board updates, excuse me, board updates. First item is an update on our naming facilities process and memorial designation process. I want to thank Mr. Mullenax and Mr. Galván for doing their work on the subcommittee to bring us where we are now from looking at processes and suggestions to, I'm sorry? Yes, board updates and topics for future meetings. So 9A, are you getting this in? Apologize, I think, did yours skip?
9A, you're out there naming facilities.
And then it'll, did yours freeze? All right, I can put mine on the side so you can see too. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so the update on the naming facilities process and memorial designations process is that we are suggesting that this will be a new proposed local policy that will address both. And so you have the proposed policy at your desks. And in comparison to last month to this month, there's just some cleanup on numbering and spacing. But more significantly is the recommendation that where we referenced calendar days for these processes, that they, that it would be business days instead. Because in these processes, there's the option for, through the superintendent, to bring recommendations directly to us. Or there's the option to exercise a committee of stakeholders. So should this fall in a month where, let's say December, where we have the winter break, March where we have spring break, we want to allow, if the district and the leadership team wishes to use a committee, that they would have business days to do so versus calendar days. And then the last section under memorial designations was expanded to mirror the process, review process similarly to what the district would do in reviewing requests for the naming facilities. The memorial designation request would follow that process as well. And then there is criteria for the memorial designations. It went from four to five. So the next step is that this is the proposed document that would go to TASB. This proposed local policy also calls for a request form that that administration would work on after TASB. We get feedback from TASB on this document. So it is not yet ready for board action until it's reviewed by TASB and comes back. Any questions? Other edits, suggestions? Okay. Next item is revisit dates for a Team of Eight Training Session. We had previously talked about satisfying our Team of Eight Training as we went through the strategic plan process, because those, the MoK-C sessions would have counted as a Team of Eight. And although we intended for everybody to, all the trustees to be there, there were circumstances in which not all trustees were able to attend so that we could get the credit as well, addressing the strategic plan, balance scorecards. But since we did not have all trustees at either of those sessions, we did not get the Team of Eight credit, so we need to revisit that. The Education Service Center is willing to come and do our Team of Eight Training along with our board self-evaluation. And not necessarily at a separate or special meeting, we can do so at our March meeting. Our March meeting will not be the second Tuesday of the month because of spring break. The district is closed. So we, in the fall, we had made that adjustment where our March regular board meeting will be on Monday, March 24th. So it is at that time that the Education Service Center can come and provide that Team of Eight training for us, along with our board self-evaluation at no cost to the district. So there will be a, we have a couple of board members who aren't here tonight, so hopefully their schedules will allow for us to take care of that Team of Eight training at our March meeting. Any comments or questions on that? Okay. Next item is our School Board Activity Calendar. So along with our Team of Eight Training, of course, it will add to the calendar. This is specific activities for the board, not necessarily the overall calendar events that spread across the district. These are things for us to do, things for us to prepare that we know. More routine items that we may need to address on a quarterly basis, annually, and so forth. So you get this weekly. Is there, at this time, is there anything that any trustee would like to add to our board activity calendar? If not, next item is requests for future meeting topics. Do any trustees have, have a meeting topic at this time that you would like to request? Okay. Our next item of business is our Action Agenda. First, we have consider and approve the Property and Casualty Insurance Renewals. We've already had the presentation. Dr. Barnes, is there anything further?
No, ma'am.
We have a motion by Mr. Stansbury to approve the Property and Casualty Insurance Renewals. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rector, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Next item, consider and approve internet provider. Trustees, so you have the bid process and materials in your packet. Would you like to come and just give us a brief overview, Mr. Ru? Good evening.
Good evening. Because we use E-Rate and USAC, we utilized that funding to help pay for our internet bills. We're a 90% district, that means we pay 10% of the bill. Well, you can do it two ways. You can get it a reimbursement, or you can get it a discount. What we'd usually do is a reimbursement, so right about in the summer, right after June 30th, we go ahead and submit all of our bills that we've paid, and then they send us a check back for the 90% for us to go through. So it's always good to know exactly how much you're spending a month anyway, which is why we do it that way. We had several different companies come in. As of right now, I did put in, we're replacing a copper line that was going to two schools, and we're going to run it to fiber, so that'll be two fiber internet lines coming in, servicing one, servicing two schools on one, and the other buildings on the other. Frontier came in right there for the fiber line to come in and take care of it for us.
Thank you. Trustees, any questions or comments on this item for the district's internet provider?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Frontier our current provider?
No, it is Sparklight. So we have two lines out with Sparklight right now, one fiber and one copper. It's like this little copper cable that comes into your house. So this is an improvement of going into two fiber lines servicing us.
Perfect. And we are anticipating just a better experience overall as far as downtime and?
Correct. And there's some things that I can do that if one company goes down, I can switch everybody over to the one, back and forth that goes with that. But it's pretty much dedicated to the separate campuses.
Trustees, anything further? We have a motion to approve Frontier Southwest Limited?
Yes, Frontier Southwest.
Okay. Frontier Southwest as a winning bidder to provide least, let, internet access for the district. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenax, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Thank you. Next item, consider and approve pass-through, whoops, hold on a second. Yes. Consider and approve pass-through grant from the Janet and Bob Loffler Family Charitable Foundation through the Aransas Pass ISD Education Foundation for Smart Boards. Dr. Barnes?
Yes, I'd actually the Board approve this pass-through grant. The foundation has done this in the past for us to help our students to get better access to technology in the classroom.
Trustees, any questions or comments on this item? If not, what is the pleasure of the Board?
I move we approve the pass-through donation from the Janet and Bob Loffler Family Charitable Foundation through the APIsD Education Foundation of $41,160.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Hill to approve the donation at the amount of $41,160 for smart boards. We have a second by Mr. Stansbury. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. So now we have, next item, to consider and approve budget amendment, amendment rather, number eight for this donation. And that is attached in your board book as well. Anything further, Ms. Choppa? So do we have a motion to approve budget amendment number eight?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rector to approve budget amendment number eight, with a second by Mrs. Hill. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item, consider and approve resolution for leave adjustments during weather-related closure. Dr. Barnes?
Yes, I'd actually the Board approve this resolution. What it'll allow us to do is to pay our staff on the day we had to close school because of the weather on January 21st, 2025.
Trustees, any questions? Do we have a motion to approve resolution for leave adjustments during weather-related closure of the district on January 21st, 2025? Motion by Mr. Stansbury to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hill, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item, consider and approve application for low attendance waiver. This would go to TEA, Dr. Barnes.
Yes, ma'am. And the following day, we had a late start, we had a two-hour delay to start our day, which of course, due to the weather, also really impacted our attendance. And we would like to ask TEA to waive our attendance, a low attendance for that day and pay us at our regular attendance rate.
Trustees, any questions for the low attendance waiver application? If not, do we have a motion to approve the application for low attendance waiver for delayed school start on Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Hill, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hill to approve, second by Mr. Mullenax, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next action item, consider and approve targeted improvement plan. Yes, okay. Yes, welcome back.
Okay, and, all right, and this might look a little different than what maybe you have seen in the past. TA did change the form this year. And so all we have to now answer are two questions, basically. And so with that, in the event that we are not awarded next week the Lasso III grant, we will still continue with our high-quality instructional material that we're currently already using at both, both campuses. And so due to the fact that Charlie Marshall and AC Blenner both Improvement Required Campuses, that is the reason for us using this. So we are participating in the Effective Schools Framework Grant. And we have TNTP, and the Education Service Center is our approved providers for that. And we did have our public hearing last week for that, and that's on there. You can go on down. And then if you have any questions about it, we just have to have you approve it before I submit it to TA.
Okay, yes, yes.
I have a question.
Okay.
The Bluebonnet, is that, that's going to be a new?
So Eureka, so with Lasso III, Eureka has turned into what they're calling Bluebonnet. And so we did not choose to go with Bluebonnet for reading. We're going to stay with Amplify. And then Eureka and Carnegie are going to now have Bluebonnet. There was less change in that, and we could receive some funding if we moved on to, and we've had it longer than we've, this was year one of Amplify. So it gets a little confusing because they're both called Bluebonnet. But we're not doing Bluebonnet for both reading and math, only for math.
Okay. There were no controversies on the math for Bluebonnet? I know there were some in the reading.
There were for the reading, but not for the math. No, ma'am. And that was one of the reasons we chose not to go with the reading as well. I figured that's what you were asking for.
Any other questions or comments from trustees regarding the targeted improvement plan? Any other questions or comments from trustees regarding the Targeted Improvement Plan? Again, this affects Charlie, Charlie Marshall Elementary and also AC Blunt Middle School. If not, do we have a motion to approve the Targeted Improvement Plan as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rector to approve the Targeted Improvement Plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hill. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Thank you. We're now at the portion of our meeting to convene an executive session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.001 concerning any and all purposes permitted by the act. Section 551.074 Personnel Matters for Discussion of Personnel Superintendent Evaluation Superintendent Contract. The time now is 8:10 PM. Our open session is now closed, and we will convene an executive session. The time now is eight, oh, this is wrong, I apologize. The time now is 9:11 PM. We have closed our executive session and re-convene an open session to act on any items requiring action from the closed session. It appears we have none at this time. Is there anything else, Dr. Barnes, Ms. Choppa? Trustees, any further business? If not, the time now is 9:12 PM. We are now adjourned.